Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. It's gonna be a good one. I'd like to call everyone to order to this regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this Monday, January 27th. The hour is 5:30. Calls all to order and ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner James Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Most gracious and all wise God, we thank you again for this another day. We thank you for the weather and for the community that we allowed to serve in. We pray and ask that we conduct this meeting in a way that will be pleasing in your sight. These are all the blessings I ask in his name. Amen.
Amen. And as I am prone to do, I'd like to call on folks that are going into retirement to lead us in the pledge. Mr. Ron Scott, please come join us.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
You gonna put that on him? Put that on. Yeah. Commissioner, you've had the agenda since Friday. Unless I hear otherwise, I'll assume you approve of the agenda items. I would like to ask that we move the audit report, which is item 11, if we could, somewhere up around after either item 5, 6, or 7. Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference, but I agree to move it up.
Let's take it up to item, after item 6, in between 6 and 7. Okay?
All right.
That way, our guests can get back in town.
You think all those other items will be real quick?
Well, should be. Item 1 is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that meeting being January 13th. Yes, sir?
We do hear the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, we are in a section called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to speak on any agenda item. You got 3 minutes at the microphone. There'll be the same opportunity later for 3 minutes with any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Do I have any takers? Yes, ma'am, please. And if you would, introduce yourself.
Name, rank, and serial number.
Serial number 2? Okay. Hi, my name is Lisa Thompson, and I live at 305 East Lexington Avenue. And... Yeah, I'm a little tall, so... But I'm a new resident to Danville, and I'm also a member of the Heart of Danville. And the reason they put me on the Heart of Danville as a new resident is because I actually have a historic preservation background. So I'm very happy to be here in this community. I moved here from Washington, DC. I worked at the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and I have been a Main Street Program Director in 2 communities, in 2 states. I worked in Paducah, Kentucky, and I've also worked in Annapolis, Maryland. So I rise here today to ask you to recommit to the Heart of Danville and their accreditation for 2020. I can tell you that my job now at the Kentucky Heritage Council, when I drive across the state, I can tell which communities have Main Street programs and which ones don't. So I ask you to recommit to them and to do everything you can to make them a successful program so that this community can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And you are with Kentucky Heritage Council now?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
I manage the National Trust for Historic Preservation programs across the state.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome to Danville.
And your name is Lisa Thompson?
Lisa Thompson.
All right. Some guys are writing that name down, right?
Is there anyone else?
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Calhoun.
My name is Margaret Calhoun, and I'm looking over Michael M. Smith from Moore Park saying they have put the light installed, but we're having problems. It's not on. It's not hooked up to the electric. And they got 3 long pipes down there laying on the ground, and I've seen some little kids over there playing with that pipe. If one of them get hurt, they gonna run up here. So I'm letting y'all know to clear that up.
So noted.
And also, you know, I walk Hill and Dale, and I see flowers laying on the ground. I put it on somebody else's headstone, and I say, "If you don't have one, you got one now." If you didn't have it, I don't know who it belonged to.
Do they ever answer your back?
Well, I hear voices.
Okay.
They be calling my name.
Good.
Margaret, and I look around, and I don't say nothing. But anyway, I'm up here for some other families that cannot find their family grave. Who is responsible? And it's nice putting them little upright little headstones with their name, I guess the day they was born and the year they died. Is City Hall doing that? The city?
The...
Whoever's over Hill and Dale?
Well, the city's responsible for the maintenance of Hilldale.
Yeah.
But as far as the city's responsibility for individual headstones and that kind of thing, that's not the city's responsibility.
Well, they got some out there that ones cannot afford a headstone. That's why I'm trying to find out. Who is putting them out there? It's nice. They upright, no bigger than this, with their name, the year they was born and the year they died.
I honestly don't know. Does anybody know?
Well, we're not supposed to answer during this time for it, but there's a guy by the name of James Hahn, Charles Gray, and Mike Dennis who are gonna be recognized here in a few minutes, so if you'll stay around and listen to how they...
Oh, okay.
You might want to...
I know them, yes.
Okay, just grab one of them by the arm and twist it a couple times.
Yeah, I was raised up in Mr. Hahn with his kids down on 7th Street, Baywood, too. All righty, that's all I have to say today. And I appreciate what y'all doing. And is the man over the recreation and parks in here today?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, I didn't see him. All right, I'll call him about some other stuff.
(Inaudible).
There he is. Yeah, there he is.
I know he wasn't in here.
Yeah, there he is, right there. Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell, meet Ms. Calhoun.
He knows me. We know him. Yeah.
Mr. Bell?
I'm sure.
I said, "If you're gonna talk to her, take her out there and talk to her." That was a real stretch about her comments being about the cemetery committee, so let's stick to our agenda about "Hear the Public" with things that are on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Anyone else?
I can talk to you right there.
Boy!
Ms. Brantley.
Good evening. My name is Jane Brantley. I'm a citizen of Danville, and I rise this evening to thank Mr. Ron Scott for his wonderful service to the city for all these years, and especially the work that he and I did together with Dr. Eric Mount to get the fairness ordinance passed in the city a number of years ago. That was a lot of work, and Mr. Scott was very generous with his time and his expertise and his intellect, and we will be forever grateful that our city chose to do that and wanted to bring that forward this evening and thank Mr. Scott for his service and congratulate him on his retirement.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd welcome Jane and JP back to our meetings. They've been gone for a while. We appreciate your return and your recovery.
If there's no one else, we'll move right on to item 1, and that is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, January 13th this year. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of 1:13:20 as presented.
Second? Commissioner Cardle, Hunter Mc... Commissioner Hahn, any discussion? Excuse me, sorry.
I'll let you slide that one time.
Mr. Atkins, yeah, I'm sitting here... You know what I'm sitting here looking at, don't you? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 2 is the retirement recognition of City Manager Ron Scott.
Who?
Ex-City Manager Ron Scott. Past City Manager Ron Scott. I think we have a few things and a few things to say. Mr. Scott, front and center, please, sir.
I want everybody to know how persistent and amiable Mr. Scott is, because when we took him snipe hunting for the 3rd time, he was a good sport. He was working up a sweat, and he said he's learned that snipes are elusive creatures, but then you went right back out in the woods with your bag and your stick, and we appreciate it.
As usual, sir, we have the customary knife.
Yes.
And this one's for you, and we expect to see you using it extensively out there on that farm, cleaning it up, as Janice is instructing you to do. This is also your nameplate in case you have to be banned to a separate bedroom, and you wanna put that on there. Ron has... I mean, what do you say here? To say Ron has been a fantastic city manager is obviously an understatement. To say Ron has been dedicated and given tremendous energy to the successful performance of his job is an understatement. To say Ron has been an advisor to the 5 of us, I think is a fair, if not also, understatement. And, sir, this city owes you a tremendous amount of gratitude, because at the time you came in, the waters were choppy, and you calmed the waters very well, and that has not been an easy thing. And as a sailor yourself, when the water's choppy, you wind up getting a little wet yourself. And so you have... You're in calm seas now, and I personally wish you nothing but the best, and I know the rest of these people with me feel the same way.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Can we... We got something else for you.
You think so? Okay. Whatever you say.
Okay.
She's pretty big, I think.
It's a clock. It's a clock, Ron. It's a clock.
Yeah, it's a clock.
(Inaudible) thank you, I don't know. Ron is an expert at fixing clocks. So he's got about, what, 76, 77 clocks laying around the house? You know. Lose count. Doesn't matter. Anyway.
So this gift is from the 5 of us as a commission to you. So if you would like to uncover that, and then I'll tell you a little bit about it. My dad makes these lights out of telephone insulators. The wood in the Kentucky is all different kinds of woods from your farm, and the ink pen is also made out of wood from your farm. And Ron's wife, Janice, had garbage cans full of insulators from telephone poles that her dad had picked up over the years. And those are 2 of your insulators from your barn as well. So...
She cleaned it.
So this is from us to you, and thank you. Ron and I actually didn't get to spend a lot of one-on-one time together for probably a couple of months, and we actually had a spontaneous lunch one day. It was kind of last minute, and he said, "Let's go to lunch." After that lunch, I thought, "I think this guy's gonna be okay." So like the mayor said, the waters were a little choppy, and you've helped us to right the ship and kept us on a steady path, and I appreciate everything that you have done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sure. As people have mentioned, you came in under some difficult circumstances and managed to juggle those chainsaws very well and got us heading in the right direction and kept us that way and kept us out of trouble. You know, money's been in short supply. You've seen us through that thus far. Now it's up to Dave to take that task, but we appreciate everything you've done, the friend you've been, and, you know, just the team spirit that we've got to enjoy since you've been here. We appreciate it.
Simply said, job well done. Happy retirement. Best wishes.
I just wanna say thanks. And I asked Stephen to come up. Stephen's been here for Ron's entire tenure, but as well.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Your time here at the city has been nothing short of exemplary. You've shown the fortitude of a servant leader and exhibited that at heart, using the sailor metaphor that the mayor exhibited. You have always charted your voyage by the stars and not by the waters or the choppiness around you, and that is to be commended. To not listen to noise but to pursue the excellence that you achieved here. And during your transformative time at the city, you have a very impressive punch list of items that have been completed. A cable franchise that was decades old in negotiating. A revamp of 911 services that will serve this community for decades. A reorganization of Parks and Recreation that will be transformative. And a series of clean, quote-unquote, "clean" audits in financial stability that this city has not experienced in decades. That is all under your leadership. We are humbly thankful for that, and again, your strength in leadership is second to none. You'll be missed. I've enjoyed working with you as a colleague and a friend. You're a gentleman and a scholar, as I've always said, and I appreciate your time here. So thank you.
After that buildup, I should just go sit down, but I will say, it has been a joy to be here and work with the city employees and the city commission. This commission, over the past 5 years and 4 years with 2 earlier commissions, so about 9 years. You know, the tone is set at the top, but the top really is the city commission and the city manager. The work gets done by the city employees, and so we're blessed to have in this community very dedicated employees that go above and beyond the call in terms of doing a work for all of us who live in the community. You know, you might ask, "What is the definition of a city?" And I guess succinctly said, it is really to preserve life and to enhance the quality of life for people. And the city does that really for everyone in the community. Other organizations do it for segments of the community, but we do it for everyone. So public service is a great calling. I hope younger generations will discover that. I say "younger" because I started in that 45 years ago. I actually had 35 in local government, and it's been a great, great experience. The achievements, you know, sometimes take a long time in government to achieve. They can only be achieved really by the cooperation of a city commission and staff. The manager's but a cheerleader or focal point between the staff and the city commission. So it requires a great deal of cooperation, coordination, and discussion, and that's different than most people think of a city manager in terms of managing a city. Really, it's not a separate set of powers, but really the more of the interaction with the city commission administratively to achieve the objectives and the policies. And when we are aligned with the county, which we have been on some major issues, and coordinate with the county and cooperate, and we've had a lot of that, too, in recent years in Boyle County, we can accomplish a lot. So I feel grateful to have had this experience. Janice and I are not going anywhere, so you'll see us about town, and who knows? I might serve on a voluntary committee. We have over 100 people that we've been blessed with having over the past number of years, and so I look forward to seeing each and all of you as we go forward together. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's cake in the hallway.
If I could ask Mr. James Hahn and Mr. Charles Gray to join me down front, I would appreciate it. Oh, yeah, Mr. Mike Dennis, you, too. Now, don't be slipping around here. Come on.
So you're fucking on the roof.
You busy man, aren't you?
You gotta check back into jail, would you say?
Yeah. Gentlemen, this is a proclamation for Black History Month 2020, and whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month, and whereas the 2020 theme of Black History Month is African-Americans and the vote. And February has been set aside for all of us to learn about and appreciate the history and contributions of African-Americans and their tremendous effect on America and its way of life. And whereas the theme has a rich and long history that begins in the turn of the 19th century with the state's passage of laws that democratized the vote for white men while disenfranchising free black men, and whereas even before the Civil War, black men petitioned their legislatures in the US Congress seeking to be recognized as voters, and whereas the important contribution of black suffragists occurred not only within the larger women's movement but within the larger black voting rights movement. Through voting rights campaigns and legal suits from the turn of the 20th century to the mid-1960s, African-Americans made their voices heard as to the importance of the vote, and whereas the theme of the vote should also include the rise of black elected and appointed officials at the local and national levels, campaigns for equal rights legislation, as well as the role of blacks in traditional and alternative political parties. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City of Danville Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim on this 27th day of January, the month of February, as Black History Month, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the importance of Black History Month and the contributions of African-Americans, not only in our city but also to our country, our state, and our nation.
I'm glad y'all got that done before February.
We knew you'd want that, sir. Everyone, this is Mr. James Hahn, Mr. Mike Dennis, Mr. Charles Gray. You on photo? Mr. Gray, you on photo? Hey, you got a hot date or what? Oh, okay. She got it. All right. Thank you, Mike. Good seeing, sir. Don't leave us, Ms. Calhoun.
I'm not.
All right. That's too good. That's too good.
James? I move to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 4 is the Beautification Committee appointment, that being Donna Fector to serve until January 31 of 2024. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the domination of Donna Fector to the Beautification Committee until 1/31/2024.
Thank you. Commissioner Cardle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry, discussion?
Is there qualifications meet? I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Mr. Calhoun.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 5 is the Cemetery Committee appointments, of which there are 2. One is Mr. Bill Stocker, and the other one is Reverend William Jenkins. Mr. Stocker's retired from ATR and worked somewhere after that, but he's very much interested in this and actually approached Commissioner Terry about being part of this, and I reached out to Reverend Jenkins. And so do I hear a motion for those appointments?
I move to accept the 2 appointments of Stocker and Jenkins to the Cemetery Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry, discussion? Seeing none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 6 is Resolution 2020-01-27-01. This is the Main Street Letter of Commitment.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-01-27-01 as presented. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cardle. We are in discussion. Seeing none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. As indicated, we'll shift to the audit report. Michelle?
We have with us today the partner in charge of our audit, Andy DeMoss, from Ray Foley and Hensley, that he will be presenting the audit, and there is a PowerPoint with this audit that you all have in your hands.
Will there be any interpretive dance?
Only if you do it.
Okay.
So thank you for having me. I'm here to present your June 30, 2019 fiscal year audit. This slideshow here, I think I mentioned this last year, your audit keeps getting larger and larger in pages, so I think just with the new accounting standards for the pension and post-employment benefits, it's added about 20, 30 pages to the audit report. So there's a lot in here, so these slides will give you a big-picture idea. The important things are, the numbers in this audit are... things are, the numbers in this audit are the city's, they're not ours as your auditors. We helped draft the report. But in the report, you'll see a couple of letters, one being our independent auditor's report. There, we say in the opinion that we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. That would be, as Stephen referred to, is a clean audit report. And unmodified is the technical term. But so that's the best report we can give you. Additionally, there is, you did have a single audit this year. You spent over $750,000 of federal funds. We did not have any findings related to that. It's just additional compliance procedures that we have to conduct as part of your audit. So you'll see that in the back of the report. But those are not on these slides, but I wanted to point those out to you. So in that regard, I think your audit was a success. But these numbers will give you a good picture of the last three years of your audit. Okay, this is your statement of net position, essentially your balance sheet. And you can see, this is 17, 18, and 19. The light green lines there are your assets and deferred outflows. And those are increasing year over year, as are your liabilities, which are the next items there. Net position is essentially the city's equity. So you see here, the last, you're increasing about $2 million per year over those last three years. The increase in assets and liabilities over the course of this last year, you did issue some bonds for, out of the general fund. So that was some of the increase there that had yet to be spent. Here is kind of the hot topic the last few years, is your net pension and OPEB liabilities. You can see those here, the last three years, that those are available. The pension liability, and these are all, I was looking at your proportionate share, the city's proportionate share has stayed pretty consistent as your little piece of the pie in the pension plan. So these numbers should be relatively consistent on how, what the overall plan, how the liability's going up and down overall in the plan. So you'll see the pension liability at the end of the year was almost $19 million. And then the OPEB liability was $5.5 million. These are purely estimates. There's a lot of factors that go into these. But they are numbers, and they're not numbers that we come up or up with, or Michelle comes up with. There's a, the pension plan does have an audit, and those are numbers that are provided to us. So the state provides those figures.
Pretty big jump between 17 and 19.
The best thing you can do on that is just look at the predicted contribution rates that you're going to have to pay in for each dollar of payroll moving forward. And I know they give you those numbers several years out. So this next slide here is your revenues and your governmental funds. Your major governmental funds are your general fund and your road fund. So you'll see here, the last three years, those have been increasing. Specifically, you can see your taxes are about $2 million of your overall revenues. The licenses and permits, that's your insurance premiums, net profits, and occupational license fees, that's what's going in there. So that's the big chunk of what your revenues are that are coming in. But they are increasing year over year. Here are your expenses for those funds, which you're also seeing an increase in. Over the course of the last three years, you'll see the biggest risers were, you had public safety increasing quite a bit. And then this past year, specifically, capital outlay, which is your purchase of new assets, has also increased, which was over $4 million. This slide here are your business-type enterprise funds, and this shows your operating revenues in those funds. So your water and sewer revenues are your primary revenues in these funds. And then you also have other fees for service, such as your parking fees and stormwater fees that are coming in as well there. But those also are increasing year over year. 18 and 19 were relatively flat. And then here are your expenses in those enterprise funds. Again, these are by, this is by fund. So you'll see your utility, your parking, your stormwater, garbage, cemetery and museum, and then interest. So the utility fund is by far the largest, and it was pretty consistent compared to the previous year. So that's, that's the bulk of the numbers there. These are, those numbers are about six months old. So they were June 30. But we appreciate the city's help. And does anybody have any questions with any of the stuff we went over here?
Is there anything in this that draws your attention?
No, I think it was a successful audit. The numbers, as I indicated, your revenues are continuing to increase. Your fund balance moved in the right direction. It's just managing your expenses moving forward. You're going to have those pension and other costs, other post-employment benefits are just going to keep to increase. So.
Now, we're going to issue another set of bonds, right? And that will increase our debt service, which increased rather substantially between 17 and 19. Michelle, how much more will that add?
We're adding $10 million to the new bond issued, and says, and about $4 million, just refunding, so that'll be taking away bonds to, and just replacing them with these for lower interest rates and the savings.
But that'll add, that $10 million of bonds will add about $100,000, $125,000 to debt service?
A little bit more than that, but, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
I appreciate the simple format for people like me who...
Well, there's a lot in there. The charts normally help people see the big picture where you're spending your money and how it's fluctuating. So, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Drive safely.
All right, thank you.
Moving right along, item seven, the Whisker Park Fountain update. Ms. Summer, I want to thank you for letting us jump in on that, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a PowerPoint that I'm stalling for, for just a moment, so.
Okay. Do you sing?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Do you dance?
No, none of that. Just an architect. That's all I got for you. We can pass these out to the commissioners. This is just a supplement, what's going to be on the screen, so you can have a take home.
Thank you, sir.
Put it on your refrigerator.
Oh.
Don't look too close yet, Commissioner Atkins.
Oh.
Okay.
Just to throw dark.
We can color it, too.
All right. So we have been working upon your request for some upgrades, revisions, changes, modifications, replacement, whatever word you would like to use for the main fountain in Whisker Park. My colleague Charlie Schneider is with me tonight. He's been here before. He is our aquatics engineer, and he is working closely with Earl Coffey on, he has on the other fountains and on this fountain as well. So let's go ahead and take a look at the first slide. Oh, I think I do that. Sorry. Okay. I was coached and I forgot. Oh, thank you. So this is what we have now. This photograph was taken back in the late summer from the corner, yes. And the improvements to the park overall are lovely. However, the fountain on the corner, oh, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, underperformed, shall we say. Didn't fully meet our expectations. And so the desire has been to have more. So this is the rendering of the proposed replacement fountain that we are proposing tonight. The Whisker ring, the memorial ring, will remain in place. The bowl fountain will come out. I'm going to toggle back and forth as I speak. The small bowl will come out, and there is a use for it at the water plant. City history reflects that there has always been a water feature at the water plant, and that got removed when the new project was built a few years ago. And so this is going to go back in its place to have a water feature at the entrance of the water plant. So that will come out, the dirt will be excavated, and a larger ring will be inserted. If you look in the background to your right, the floral ring, the seat wall, this, the detailing on this will match that. So the top banding, the brick, will match the other ring in the park. It is 12 foot across, and the drawing that I handed you for your notebook, that Charlie handed you, reflects those dimensions. So the, there will be less room for planting. However, there is a small band that can remain for the lovely begonias that everyone loves. But the fountain then is, as you see, the top of the water flume, the main one, I believe we're reflecting there, is about 7.5 feet tall. And so that's why we show people in the rendering, so you get some perspective as to the height, the width of the water. The central flume then is surrounded by some smaller jets that sort of have an arcing pattern back into the central fountain. There will have to be a pit installed over to the grassy area to the left, similar to the other fountain, the water curtain fountain, where the controls and mechanisms and pumps and things will operate this fountain. And we have a short video that will run. It's not terribly fancy. This is an example of another similar fountain located elsewhere. So you can sort of see what the effects of it might be. This is a rendering that the fountain company generated for us, and then we used it to make the other rendering that we just showed you. So this does give a good example of how the water will animate, even though this background is not correct. The fountain will come with lights that can be controlled, and colors can change, and that kind of thing. So that can be fun for festivities and holidays and And that's it.
Okay.
Here we go. I don't know, I get it back.
Any questions?
Get it back.
Comments?
Much better. Much better?
Much better.
No better.
So that's a thumbs up, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm pleased to hear illumination, so that's good.
Yes. I think that's really necessary, especially for nights.
Installation timeframe?
Well, we're going to begin working on that with Mr. Coffey. I believe the plan is still to, for him to have city forces do this work, which is totally possible to do
Is there a savings in having staff do it versus having?
Yes. Yeah, we estimate that the, this is a sort of a thumbnail estimate. If you were to bid it out, it would be in the neighborhood of $120 to $150. That's $150,000. Whereas, he believes he can do it for less than $100,000. Because essentially, then, you're purchasing the equipment, and it's sort of plug-and-play type equipment. So your public works folks can install that equipment.
So the control, controls are the underground or in a box that sits there underground?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I won't have to try to hide those, huh? Well, we appreciate the hard work that you guys put into this. Certainly put a lot of hard work in designing Whisker, and then us scrutinizing ones up here had a different thought about it. So, but I think we're getting to where we want to be, and hopefully the citizens of Danville and Boyle County feel the same way.
I'm not sure it's appropriate, but I never let that stop me before. I kind of like to have a bit of a hard date as to when this will be fixed.
The first step for staff will be confirming that you all support this approach or support this alternative. We'll probably give it a couple of weeks to air. We'll do some background research and probably place it on the agenda at the next commission meeting, and we'll discuss it briefly and try to shore up some of the details and the numbers. We'll get with John and Rick, and then also work on the schedule. A big issue will be the lead time, the delivery of your pump system. We do have confidence that we can put it in. We did, you will have to contract with an electrician and a plumber to do some other fine tuning, but we believe we can do it.
The lead time is eight weeks, by the way, on the equipment.
Okay. Well, I personally would like to see it done and cleaned up by Brad Van.
Yes, sir.
So what do you need from us tonight, Earl or Veronica? Or we need a motion, or just a general okey-dokey?
Well, it depends on how comfortable you are. I mean, we believe that the pump will cost in the neighborhood of, I think she said the other day, $40,000. And logically, we believe that then with self-reforming the demolition, then you buying some additional materials like concrete, you're going to end up somewhere between an additional $40,000 and change. I mean, I don't have a precise estimate. Then, if we start now, if you all would like to authorize us to go now, then, you know, we would start the process of creating a bid document, and we could do that. But, and then you all could come back with a bid, approving the bid. That would probably be the next appropriate action by the board.
Why don't I do this with a nod of the head? Are you good with it? And if you are, let me turn this over to City Manager Mill Iron and let him work this problem through.
Is that acceptable with you? Okay.
You gonna do some fundraising for me?
I have slices of cake, 500 pieces.
Man, $100,000.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was looking for a free fix.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back here.
Okay. Item eight, Mr. David A. Mill Iron, your first official city manager report, sir.
I noticed there's nothing in the books. I have no report. We'll move on.
Some of it.
Quick, quick update on the lighting issue, safety downtown. So there is a sample post-top fixture that's been installed. It is a pilot. It doesn't meet your Department of Transportation requirements for lighting, but it's there so that you can see the lightness, brightness. It's installed outside the former Q Restaurant. It's illuminated this evening. As I mentioned, the optics package that shines on all four sides, it will not, ultimately, the end version will not shine on four sides, because you cannot have an excessive amount of spill light into the highway. So when you look at it, look at the output of the light, see that if you're happy and comfortable with it. Carries about a five-year warranty. They're about $400 per fixture. But I think we're headed in the right direction. So let's see if this beautiful warm-colored temp of about 3,000 K works, and if so, we can move forward with that. You'll see down here, to the left of our city clerk, Ashley Rader, Brittany Kaufman, she is taking on some expanded responsibilities in administration. She'll be providing administrative support to the city manager and also human resources. And she has started tonight cross-training with the city clerk, and therefore she can backfill when Ms. Rader decides she needs to be on vacation, or wants to go fishing, or snipe hunting, or whatever else. Speaking of our city clerk, Ms. Ashley Rader, I do want to, I'd send a shout out to the staff, but do I recognize the fact that as of January 2020... staff, but do I recognize the fact that as of January 14th, you celebrated your one-year anniversary as city clerk, serving the commission? So certainly give her kudos to that. Soon we will, we're in the final throes, we've got some reviews to do, but working with staff on a solid waste contract that'll be going out to bid. The last time the solid waste contract was out to bid was a decade ago, so it's time to dust that off, look at how we're doing business, and put out that to bid. And me just being a creature of habit, I met with the auditor before the meeting and said, this is absolutely no reflection on you, your services, but this is the ideal time to put the audit and the auditor out for RFP. It should be done, it's recommended to be done on a five-year or less intervals. So I said, no harm, no foul, great audit, great work, it's not reflective. But as these contracts come up, it's behoove it to us to make sure that the taxpayers are getting great value for their money. And so that one will also be going out to bid. On your schedules is the February 6th retreat for planning staff. We need to understand the consensus of the commission as to what time you all want to meet. So that's a discussion topic for the commission. And lastly, I'll be requesting a executive session this evening for personnel reasons. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Mill Iron?
About the 6th, you want that, you want us to discuss that now, or?
If staff can get direction, I've got folks on hold and standby, so I need to know what time, and then we can work on a location.
I personally marked out the whole date, so anytime it's time with me.
I did too.
I would prefer the afternoon. Mr. Dad, you retired.
I have some tumors, what'd you say? I'm good anytime.
So maybe if we get to starting at noon or something.
If that's the will of the commission, we can start at noon?
That's fine. Noon, 11 o'clock, whatever.
All right, we'll start at 11 a.m. with lunch. And we're going to, how long? Eight, nine, 11? At night?
I would think we would beat that to death by two to three that afternoon.
I'd say three, probably, just to be safe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I've got anchovies for lunch. We're all good. Thank you.
Don't forget the buttermilk with the anchovies. Location to be determined, right?
Yes. Ron Scott said that he'll assist, we'll reach out to our great stewards over at Center College and probably find a location on campus.
I think we ought to have it out of Ron's, but never mind.
He had facilities, but apparently someone robbed it for some kind of gift or something, so he's short on supplies.
Yeah, it's barn.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're in the section called Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Stocker. I was appointed by the mayor and the commissioners to serve on the cemetery committee, and I'm very thankful for that. I will do my very best to work with the other committee members to maintain and improve the quality of our cemeteries. And while we're talking about cemeteries, our last meeting, James Hohn came up and discussed briefly about Meadow Lane. We've spent the last couple of years trying to clean Meadow Lane up. It's a historic cemetery, it's got many, it's an African-American cemetery, it has many slave graves in there, and it's got great historical value for this county. I spent last weekend transcribing twelve deeds from the old handwriting in the deed books, because we've spoken to Mr. Dexter, he's, we're working with him, and I'm going to give him a list here in a few minutes to make his job easier, to be honest with you. Got deed book numbers, pages, and so forth, and keep you from trying to read handwriting that's 120 years old, because it's, it can be difficult. So we want to thank you, Mr. Dexter, for working with us and trying to get the ownership of Meadow Lane Cemetery over to the city of Danville. It's a small cemetery, it only covers about a half an acre. We spent about a year cleaning it up. It's a beautiful little cemetery, it's completely shaded by trees, and it's a pride and joy for the African-American community. And one more topic about cemeteries, seemed like our whole night's talked about cemeteries, and I forgot to do this last meeting. I got home and then I realized that I'd made a boo-boo. I want to publicly thank John Castle, Joyce Collins, and Jason Turner. We met with John about the middle of December and talked to him about our going through Hilldale Cemetery and transcribing the information that's on the stones, and making a list, a documented list, of who all was buried there. Because it's a, it's a large cemetery, I think it covers seven and a half acres. And it's, if you don't know exactly where your loved one's buried, you could walk all day and not find them. So we're going to make a list, and it's only going to have documented burials through either Kentucky death records, obituaries in the paper, or what's physically on the tombstone. And we're going to GPS every grave, so that with today's technology, you don't have to walk seven and a half acres. You can simply take your GPS and go right straight to the grave. And John Castle and his group have been so, so supportive of us, and have offered suggestions and help. Jason Turner came out and talked to us about burials and so forth, educated us on that. And we're, again, we're just grateful for all the support from everybody in the city on this, on this adventure. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your willingness to volunteer.
Not only me, but many others.
Many others. Yes, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Hello, my name's Melissa Norman. I'm a social work student at EKU, and this was a requirement for me to come and see a meeting and everything. But the only thing that, as a social work student, I'm all about social justice and helping others, and the only problem that I really had with anything was, I understand wanting to, you know, the beautification of our, of our city, I'm a home improvement junkie, so I understand that. But also $100,000 at the very least is, would make a huge difference on other avenues, such as, you know, homelessness. And, you know, I know a woman who, she takes care of, she has adopted her nephew, she gets social security, and she gets $15 in food stamps a month, which would not, and she doesn't have, you know, there's, we have one food bank here and one injunction, and, you know, she also doesn't have, she has a car, but it's not really dependable. But, because, like I said, I understand wanting to make that huge, I've lived in Owensboro, and I was there when they redone the river park, and it's fantastic. That's the only thing I miss about Owensboro. But I just think there's better uses for that money. I done my 390 practicum at the Danville Housing Authority, and it's not, when I went there, I didn't, I realized that they don't just help people with homes. We would find resources for food, resources, you know, to help them pay their bills and everything. And, you know, it's, it's a nice thing to walk down Main Street, but, you know, you'll go anywhere else in the county where, you know, the housing authorities have, and there's people struggling every day, they don't know where their next meal is coming from. So that's the only issue that I have with that, and so I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, I did have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I forgot something that's very important.
Hi, my name's Bill Stocker. We talked earlier about Black History Month for the whole month of February, and I just wanted everybody to know that Michael Hughes, Mr. Music for Danville, is ill. I think he's in the hospital at UK. Mike is in the hospital at UK, and he's having some, some difficulties. So keep him in your thoughts and prayers. He had a gospel concert lined up for the first weekend in February, Mike, and it's, it's been canceled. He just simply, he's had a lot of health problems here in the last little bit, and it's gotten worse. So we've had to cancel the gospel at Danville High School, but we still are going to have a film every Thursday night in the basement of the library at 6 o'clock for all four Thursdays of the month of February. But I just want everybody to remember Mike and keep him in their thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner comments?
Yep, I'll do a public shout-out. I think everybody knows, because the paper keeps us well-informed, that Wilderness Trail Distillery has made the step up, and that's a proud thing for our community. You know, over the past several years, we've always tried to recognize individuals in our community that have, that have done very well. In this, in this case, it's an organization, so I don't think that should go without being recognized. Segueing into, we talked about, and so I'm going to pass this off to you, Mr. City Manager, to try to get in touch with the Center Soccer Team and the Boyle County High School Football Team, because they both raised two levels. Boyle County not the first time, but they did make the state tournament, and we'd like to recognize them. But Center College's soccer team has never been to the Final Four in Division III, and I think that we should recognize those folks. They were busy at the time when Ron Scott had reached out to them, and they just, they were going into finals week, so it wasn't a good time for them. But I think it's, I think it's good to take those opportunities, be proud of the accomplishments we have in this community, and I don't want to miss those if we can. Also, you know, sometimes parts of our community kind of get overlooked, and so this isn't really a big accolade, but the paper did cover it well. KSD had hosted a deaf basketball tournament, it was well-attended. I heard a few things about how many people were here, and I don't remember the numbers, but sometimes we forget about that campus, just sitting right over here to our southwest, east, I mean, so, thought I'd mention that. And I guess that's all I have.
Got anything? Shout-out to our one and only, Mr. James Atkins, for the recognition he received for his involvement in educating all of us on Dr. Martin Luther King. And I know that that has been near and dear to your heart for a long time, and it's nice to see you get the recognition you deserve.
Last week, Commissioner Sears and myself attended the Bluegrass Area Development District Annual Meeting. Our new governor was the keynote speaker, so he had some interesting things to say about moving forward in our state. And it was just a good, good thing that we attended and learned a lot.
And while we're talking about some of those things, I think it's next Wednesday, we have Bluegrass tomorrow? Next Wednesday, I think we have a table, and it's at the Griffin Gate in Lexington at 7:30 in the morning. And our very own Grace Cafe is being recognized and honored. And it is a large gathering, so would be good to have as many of us there as possible. How many you got so far?
There's, there's six open seats.
So do we let you know if we're going? Okay. We're going to draw straws to go that early, or what?
We'll work that out. Anything else?
Yeah, I think Denise reminded me of one more thing I forgot to mention. It just happened this morning, and David, you might help me with it. It was a presentation by Center students. They did a lot of study about our town and economic development, and, and it was well-attended, not everybody could attend, but I've been informed it's been, it's been put on tape, so we have a film. And how will people be able to see that if they want to see that presentation? Do you know how that?
Usually takes a couple of days, and then some of the flyers from this morning's presentation are actually back on the entrance, those are those bright yellow flyers, and that'll also give you sort of a prelude into the topics.
They did an excellent job, and it's, it's kind of, I thought it's fun, it happened a couple of years ago, and I think last year I might have missed it, but, and I'm sure you guys have probably seen it as well at one point, but you've got folks that come to our community to go to college and take a look at us from the outside in, and they're being kind, but there's things we have to fix. And what's kind of gratifying is some of the things that they're pointing at, we're working on, so that makes me feel pretty good.
Good. Anything else?
Yes, I have a list of things I'd like to share, and these could all be under the category of free historical information about Black History Month. The movies, I call them Thursday movies at the public library, and all these things, I think, are being sponsored by the African-American, the Danville-Bull County African-American Historical Society, Citizens Concerned for Human Relations, the Heart of Danville, Great American Dollhouse Museum. So, on Thursdays, Jackie Robinson, A Raisin in the Sun, Red Tails, and Barbershop are the four movies, and they're trying to provide talking points about each of the four movies and have a, I guess, a discussion session after the movies. February the 7th, I think it's a Friday night, Center College is hosting another public viewing of American Creed, which is a HBO documentary about citizenship and what it looks like, sounds like, smells like in 2020. Dan Strup and J. H. are going to be leading the discussion of that video, which is scheduled February the 7th. And then the other thing that's been sponsored is that if you are a senior citizen and live in Bull County, the entire month of February 2020, every Wednesday and every Friday, with proof that you're 60 years yonder, I used to say something else, but 60 years yonder, you're entitled to free admission to the Dollhouse Museum, to gain knowledge about that museum, but more importantly, to gain knowledge about important African-American contributions in this community and throughout the country. So all those events are going on throughout the month of February in the Bull County.
There is a reception for Mr. Ron Scott Thursday evening, open to the public at the Arts Center of the Bluegrass from 5:00 to 6:30. That is Thursday, January 30th.
Hope to see many of you all there. Should be a nice evening.
I believe our fire chief, who's retiring, will be there also.
Yes, correct. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move right to item nine, payment of the bills, which you have before you. Chair will entertain a motion for the payment of the bills.
Mr. Mayor, there is one other thing, and I, I just wanted to apologize to the community. There seems to have been a lack of communications, or really no communications about the Danville Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration that took place in this community on Monday, the 20th of January. I've been out traveling again, so was not. I've been out traveling again, so it was not a part of the actual planning, but I heard there was a real serious lack of communications about what was going to go on. And I, and I bring it up as a way to apologize to my community, but more importantly, I bring it up as a way to say it's probably time for the city to look at sponsoring its own ML King Celebration. I was in Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, and Hilldale, Florida, and I was just amazed about the way those communities still celebrate Dr. King's birthday, and the, the number of elementary, middle, and high school kids and adults. I participated in a three-mile walk, and I was just blown away by the number of folks in the community of all races and all religious denominations and ethnicities and everything else. Of course, it was a seventh degree, so it was easy for me to walk in that parade, but we just got to get back to, if it's important to us, then we need to be doing something.
Well, you, you did that about, what, two or three years ago?
Well, I did it in May, because, I did it in, at the time in April of the assassination.
Right.
The 50th commemoration of the assassination.
Right.
But I did not want to touch on the other stuff, because we've been having the NAACP take the lead on it, and evidently, there was really not much of a lead taken this year. And then for me to be receiving the recognition that I received, and then they found out that I've been participating in marching with Hersberg for the last nine or 10 years, that was not, that should not have been a part of the discussion, but it was. So we just need to think about, if it's important to us in Danville, we might want to get back in the mix of getting the Danville Boyle County African-American Historical Society or somebody to take the lead on a community-wide celebration. So that's a little.
Good idea. Good idea. Payment of bills, item nine. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills as presented?
I'll move for approval of the bills in the amount of $130,373.01.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 10, it will be the first reading of ordinance number 1944. This is in regards to the issuance of, and refunding of some bonds. Let's go ahead and have a motion for this and a second, and then we can be in discussion, and Michelle can lead us through that. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead. You start it. Age before beauty, go ahead.
Ooh. He's good tonight, isn't he? Okay. Since I'm 39, I'll do it. First reading of ordinance 1944, bond ordinance, I move for approval of that as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is second by Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We are now in discussion. Michelle?
This is a bond ordinance, allowing us to bond up to, but not to exceed, $14 million. As said before, approximately $4 million of that will be refunding of other bonds with a net savings after all expenses of at least $325,000. Then also, we will also be borrowing new money of approximately $10 million to do upgrades on the utility sewer plant and to expand lines into the industrial park at this time. These are all items that have been on your capital plan, your tenure capital plan, and we are getting the funding while the, while interest rates are at a historical low.
Any questions for Ms. Castle?
And these are general obligation and not revenue?
We've been doing all our bonds as general obligation bonds with the backing of revenue pledges in order for us to keep our good bond rating, because the general fund has such a good bond rating, and to get the lowest rate possible.
Thank you.
Could you say again what the savings is to the taxpayer?
They'll save at least $325,000, probably more.
Thank you.
$375,000, and probably more than that, but that's the conservative number of 375
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, chair will call, question, call for the vote.
I'm going to read it into the record first.
Yes, ma'am, please do.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 1944, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its general obligation public project and refunding bonds, Series 2020, to pay and reimburse costs of public projects and to refund outstanding obligations of the city, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, approving and authorizing the advertisement and acceptance of bids for the purchase of the bonds, undertaking continuing disclosure obligations with respect to the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. Commissioner Atkins?
I was going to actually explain that first.
Yeah, what?
I vote yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
All right, item 12 is Resolution 2020-01-27-02. This is the highway safety grant application. Chief Gray, I believe we do this every year.
Yes, Mayor. This is the usual highway safety grant application. We're going to apply for about $27,000. It's a direct supplement. There's no cost to the city. It's for officer overtime. This runs, or takes care of the fees and the things for the click-it-or-ticket campaign, drive sober, get pulled over, and the seatbelt tickets and stuff like that.
I move to accept Resolution Number 2020-01-27-02.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry.
And again, there's no matching fund here, this is straight up. Is that right, Chief Gray?
Any questions or comments for the chief? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. I believe that ends our agenda for regular session. Chair will entertain a motion to move into executive session for personnel reasons.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session. Everybody have a good evening.
I'll move that we return to regular session.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Sears, second by Commissioner Cottle. All in favor of moving back into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We are in regular session. Mr. Milliron? Or Madam Clerk?
Either one.
Either one. Make a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are personnel recommendations for confirmation by the city commission. The first will be for Jocelyn Spanner. Jocelyn Spanner is current telecommunicator and being recommended for communication training manager and to receive the incentive of $1,500, all subject under normal probationary standards, if applicable. The second is rehiring retired police officer Sally Bussell for a part-time position with the Danville Police Department, also under normal probationary standards if they apply. The third is the hiring of Thomas Bland for Class IV Operator, also under normal probationary periods with the Water Department. And last is the hiring of Randy Boyd for the position of Human Resources Manager, also under normal probationary standards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion for acceptance of that, those recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by me. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. I don't believe there's any further business to come before the board. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded by me. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.